So we're here for a budget presentation by the school department.
Do you have the budget allegiance?
When we get to the budget, not before the workshop.
Okay, because it says that.
That's Thursdays.
Is Tuesday Thursday?
Take it away.
Take it away.
Thank you. I first would like to thank the mayor and city council for your consideration of the Lewiston Public Schools operating budget for 2019 and '20 school year. Please know that the school committee has committed well over 15 hours reviewing and making amendments of the budget details and make a recommendation to you that we believe best meets the needs of our students while also keeping the property taxpayers in mind. As you know, the responsibility of the councils to determine whether or not they should support the overall level of the school budget. The tax rate increase proposed is one and a half percent, and at this level, we will hopefully reduce elementary class sizes and improve school security amongst other things. The school committee hopes that you will also find this is within the financial capacity of our city. I recognize that if approved, this budget will raise local school taxes more than the minimum required local share. Due to the low 1.7 inflation factor of the state school funding formula, our contractual obligations alone increased our budget 3 percent. And as you know, we continue to be one of the few districts in Maine with an increase in student enrollment. Traditionally, Lewiston has funded schools at the minimum required local share. On average, Maine school districts raise 47 percent above the minimum required local share of the state's 100 largest school units. Only one district is at the minimum required local share for their draft budgets. Also, our per pupil costs are among the lowest in Maine and has averaged 12 percent less than the state average. Finally, depending on the passage of the state budget, there is a reasonable chance that we will receive additional state subsidy that is not in our budget. These additional funds would be used exclusively to reduce the local tax burden to hopefully less than 1 percent. And with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Webster. But before he starts, I just want to acknowledge the school committee's members that are behind me, and also Alicia Ray is the council representative to the school committee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation tonight, but before going through that, I just wanted to make sure that you should have received last week a updated budget memo. You should have received a summary by article. You should have received the draft Warren articles, and you should have received a summary of the changes in the budget. And I'll make some reference to those documents as we go through here, and I'll repeat a little bit of what you've already seen, but I've tried to introduce some new information that I think you'll find helpful as well. So as Mr. Kerr mentioned, since the budget release on March 4th, we've had eight different budget meetings and over 15 hours of review on the part of the school committee. And their review has been both from the standpoint of what's in this budget that ought to be eliminated, and also what's not in this budget that we really feel is major for students. And the final budget reflects reflects that. The school committee approved the budget on April 8th. You, as the council, are scheduled to consider the budget on May 7th. And if it is approved at that meeting, that will set in motion the budget validation referendum to take place a week later on May 14th. And before that, on May 9th, Thursday night, I'll have a community-wide informational budget meeting at Farwell. In the few slides that I have tonight, and you all have a copy of them, I will give a little snapshot of Lewiston Public Schools, some information you've seen before, but some you may find of interest and different. Also, what is in the 2019-20 budget and the local tax impact on Lewiston. This is a slide that you've now seen a number of times. It's interesting, I think when I presented it to you a few weeks ago, we saw an uptick in the state enrollment numbers, which I questioned. And the state, while it haven't updated the website yet, have, in an email to me, sent corrected numbers. And you'll see that essentially state enrollment has been flat the last three years. And while Lewiston's enrollment is not growing at the rate that it was three or four years ago, it is still one of the few districts in Maine with growing student enrollment. And with increased student enrollment, we're also having, although there's been some leveling off, you see the slide, a percentage of English language learners. That was, appears to be perhaps a momentary low, because it picked up again since October 1st. And so I think you'll see that continuing to rise. And also, our special ed population percentage is continuing to rise as well. So again, in addition with increased enrollment, we have increased in also English language learners in special education and all the challenges and opportunities that go with that.
Counselor Ray.
Hi, Bill. So just, or Superintendent Webster, sorry. So on the ELL population, I know that there was a miscalculation at the state level for how many ELL students we have. Is that reflected here in this graph, or is this our own personal data?
That information was in regard to the number of ELL students in the four-year program. That number was wrong, my understanding, though it was in the total. It just wasn't allocated correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Here's something that you may have not have seen, although it was in last year's presentation, maybe in a different format. This is the six-year completion rate. So traditionally, you probably thought of graduation rate. They now use the term completion rate, and you'll notice that this is six-year, which I think is appropriate for Lewiston from two standpoints. Number one, we have a lot of ELL students that join us in middle school and early years in high school, and they can receive a public education through age 20. So, and the state recognizes, it makes sense for us to talk about a six-year completion rate, because it would be much lower for many of these students in only thinking about a four-year. Also, the number of students we have homeless and students coming from poverty, if they're going to get their high school diploma at all, often take that up to six years. You'll see that we've had a pretty consistent growth since 2010. I won't say it's been astronomical, but it's gone up. And we do anticipate a downturn for 2018. Now, keep in mind, we won't know the final 2018 numbers until 2020, because it takes two more years to have that six-year completion rate. I'm pretty confident in the 2017 number, because the five-year rate was already 79 percent. And we typically got another percentage of two for that six-year. But I, but we do see, I'm pretty sure, what would be a downtick for 2018. And so I think one of the things that the school committee has considered in this budget are, what are ways that we can combat that? And I'll get to that in just a second. I also wanted to share with you, and this slide may be a little confusing in hindsight, but first of all, it shows the enrollment by area. Elementary school, we presently have six, we'll have five next year, Lewiston Middle School and Lewiston High School. And you'll see it for 2018, 19, and then for 2019, 2020. Within the high school numbers, we also have a number of special programs. You may have heard the term Longley Pilot, for example, which is the, a new kind of high school that this year is located at Tree Street. We also have an alternative program at Lewiston Middle School, excuse me, at the Armory, which also serves a high school. And so I present this for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to show that an increasing percentage of Lewiston High School enrollment is in these alternative-type programs. And that that's one of the ways we're going to meet these students that are rather struggling in high school. Also on this slide is percentage chronic absenteeism, and I want to talk a little bit more about that. This is a new measure that the state is beginning to go to, and something we've looked at for the last several years here in Lewiston. Chronic absenteeism is defined as someone who misses 10 percent more of school for any reason. Now, right now, our truancy laws in Maine are strictly geared around excused versus unexcused absence, and I hope that in the, in the coming year, that this will be something that DOE will look at and will have some new legislation. Because at the end of the day, it's not whether an absent was excused or not, it's whether someone is in school or not. And so this measure has been proven to be a most accurate measure of who will ultimately graduate from school. And you'll notice, and this, I was just looking at today, and it just, I hadn't really seen it this way, 31 percent of our high school students are chronically absent. And when we think that we only have a graduation rate in the 70 to 80 percent range, a big reason of that is because of chronic absenteeism. I only know this anecdotally, because we don't get, break it out in the state data, but the, our special programs have a much lower percentage of chronic absenteeism. And it's because of those programs being geared specifically to the students in them. So that's just something to keep in mind as we move forward. So how do we improve completion rates? How do we improve or reduce chronic absenteeism? There are six things that are identified on here, all of which we've attempted to address in one form or another in the budget. Addressing poverty issues. As I was driving over here, there was a report on NPR about poverty. It was saying that the poverty rate among, if I recall correctly, among students has increased 30 percent in the last two years. So despite of our improving economic picture as a state, because of opioid addiction and other issues, our number of students that are living in poverty and homeless has gone up by some estimates as much as 30 percent. While not specifically in the budget, we have, as you may know, under the leadership of our chair, established a new poverty committee. It has its first meeting this week, and we've got private funding that will service the costs of that committee for this coming year. And one of the things that we do hope to do is receive some training from the Harlem Children's Zone, which has a program specifically geared to helping communities address poverty issues. There'll be more information on that forthcoming in the weeks ahead. A second issue, enhancing school safety. And I want to use the school safety definition broadly. This would include a parent who may be apprehensive about their child walking to school. It's not just a threat that might exist at the school. So we've looked at ways to enhance school safety, and it's interesting, and this is just anecdotally, but there were days that we didn't have school this year, that when I was in Lewiston eight years ago, we would have had school. And it's just, the times are changing, and it's something that I think is a challenge, is that threshold of what parents expect is getting higher and higher, and not wanting their child to have any risk, whatever it might be. A third area is adding socio-emotional supports for students. Just, again, just in the last couple of years, we have noticed an uptick in the needs of our students in this area, and we've attempted to address that in this budget. I mentioned briefly already about enhancing alternative programs. In the past, if a student didn't fit the, or if Lewiston High School did not fit what a student needed, student dropped out, and that was their problem. We've changed that mindset now. We've got to better meet students where they are, and that often means something different than the traditional programs at the high school or in other schools for that matter. Reducing class size is also something, when we look at classes that have a high percentage of English language learners and increasing high percentage of special ed students, reducing that class size is giving those teachers a better opportunity to engage with their students. And then the final bullet on here is more engaging programming. Students today, and you know, we can criticize this generation or millennials that are, have graduated, but at the bottom line is if they don't see relevance in what they're being taught, they're just not being engaged. And that's something that we as educators have to be increasingly conscious of.
And if I could, just add, more and more, every year, students are coming to school not prepared to learn. And truly, you know, it's because of poverty, because of the social emotional supports that they're not getting at home. And some of, you know, that program, the alternative program, we're very excited in the direction that's going to go. But just, you know, the end result is that more and more, we have more kids every year coming to school, and they're not fed properly, they're just not ready to learn. And I think hopefully this budget starts to address that issue.
Yeah, just another anecdote. Other than the store next door at Lewiston High School, when I started in Lewiston eight and a half years ago, we had no food pantries. They're now in the majority of our schools, as we're feeding kids evenings and weekends. So what's new to the budget? And the intent here is to address some of the approaches on the last slide about how do we improve our graduation rate, how do we reduce chronic absenteeism. We've added six regular classroom positions. These are at the elementary level, is also at the high school. They further reduce class size, and at the high school, increase some of the options that our students have. From a safety standpoint, this budget includes a new school resource officer. This will be located, if approved, at Longley, excuse me, at Connors Elementary School. And when we think about it, staff and students in that whole Franklin Passage complex is going to be 3,000 people. It's a pretty large group of people, and one that we feel appropriately, from a safety standpoint, deserves a school resource officer.
Ms. Webster, sorry.
I'm sorry.
When you say new to budget, that's since our last budget presentation at the high school, correct? It's not new?
No, it's, it's new to this year's budget.
Okay.
So if, and I don't go into detail in this presentation, but I, we can refer to the memo. If you look at the interior of the memo, it shows the positions that were in the budget that were part, that were presented at the workshop, that so-called option two. And then the last attachment shows what was added. So this is a combination. So thank you for helping me clarify that. The, also on here, from a safety standpoint, but also allowing us to expand the enrollment is an administrator at Longley. As you may know, that building is going to be used to consolidate three of our present high school programs, primary high school programs. We have the Longley Pilot, we have the alternative program that is presently at the Armory, and then we also have the Dingly program, which is for suspended and expelled students that's at the Dingly building. We just need that space, and we can't continue to house that at Dingly. And by having an administrator there with some of our most challenging and difficult students that need most support, we think that we're going to be in much better position to not only maintain those programs, but also to grow them. Within this budget, and this is new since, and actually, I guess I could at least cite from memory to go back to your first question there. The six regular classroom positions, two of those were in the initial budget that you saw. Four have, since then, three elementary classroom positions and an ed tech, an elementary classroom. The school resource officer and Longley administrator are new since the workshop. The three school counselors are new since the workshop. The seven Connors custodians, and there are actually eight, but we're looking at making a, an adjustment, a cut elsewhere, were already in the budget for that. The accountant and the ELL assistant director position were in the initial budget presentation. And the busing for Longley students is new since the workshop presentation. Also in this budget is the Robert V. Connors Elementary School. That was in the initial presentation. There are some additional costs associated with that. We're talking about a building that is roughly 145,000 square feet, and we're closing the Martel Elementary School, and off the top of my head, that building has got maybe 40,000 square feet. We're also, as I mentioned, consolidating the three alternative programs at Longley. And I mentioned this next thing, funding technology plan in the regular budget, only because we've had technology in our LCIP the last couple of years. These would be, you know, computer purchases and the like, and that is in the regular school budget this time. So that's one of the things the council had expressed an interest in us doing that as part of the regular operating budget, as opposed to LCIP. And then, while it's not a great deal of expense, I did want to mention, because of the last bullet, support for exponential learning at the middle school. I don't know how much you may have heard about that. This is an example of having more engaging program that students are excited about. And I had, I've had more parents speak to me about this, about having their middle school child come home and talk about school in a positive way than ever before. So, and there are a couple of pictures coming up here from the element, from the middle school exponential learning program. So this chart shows the Lewiston school tax going back to FY '16. And the, on the right, the 1084 is the budget that was approved by the school committee. That compares to 1068 this year. The 1078 number is if the additional state funding is forthcoming. And in my conversations with DOE, if the governor's budget is approved, we will get that money. If it's not approved, or if there are adjustments made to it, then we'll get that next year. So it's money we're going to get, just a question of the timing. If it goes in this year's approved for the FY '20 budget, we will then get it. And I, I've already made reference to, but I wanted to make specific mention of a Warren article, because this may be a question that you have. But in Warren Article 13, it reads in part, "In the event that Lewiston School Department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, the school's committee shall first use the additional state subsidy to decrease the local cost-share expectations for local property taxes for funding public education, provided that the total amount of funds raised by local taxpayers is no more and no less than the local cost-share expectation defined by law." So that's perhaps somewhat legalese. But what that means is that because we're raising more than the minimum required local share, any additional funds not budgeted that receive will go to use, to reduce local property taxes until that point is reached. So based, again, based upon our, we think it's a reasonable expectation that we'll receive another $113,000, which will reduce the local tax burden to 1078. So there's a lot more that could go over. You've been presented a lot of information prior to this meeting, including budget detail numbers. I think it would be appropriate to open it up for questions. And also, in addition to the board members here, Chief Administrative Officer Bobby Avery's in the audience as well. And so between the chair, superintendent, and those behind us, we hope that we can answer any old questions you have. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Counselor LaJoie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, on the sheet that you handed us tonight, number nine.
So if I may, Counselor, we're going to go to the LCIP after
Okay.
the budget. So that's support for that. So my apologies for not making that clear.
No, that sounds good. Thank you.
Counselor Lyson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The six-year LHS completion rates, could you go back to that slide?
Yes.
The, I know they're estimated 17 and 18, but you're pretty confident 17 made a pretty dramatic increase. I'm just wondering if you know why? And second of all, you're expecting almost a 5 percent decrease in 2018. You mentioned that. Why, why, why is that? Best guess?
So I do think that we have more work to do in this regard. I have no doubt that some of the 2018 drop is because of all the, I'll call it turmoil. We've had change in directions at the state level. We've had the local school department, as well as other departments across the state, doing their best to be in compliance with state law. It's created a lot of confusion, a lot of angst, not only in Lewiston, but other districts across the state. Some of you may know directly, if you've had students, that we've changed the grading systems on more than one occasion. And so I think that is, it has to be part of it, I don't know how much. The other thing that I would point out, that I mentioned earlier, is that the socio-emotional needs of students, the number of our homeless students, the number of students in poverty is increasing, and I think that's reflective of that as well.
You mean within this last?
Within just the, the last couple of years. Now, part of the 2017 increase, I think is directly related to we have enhanced extended year programming to provide students other opportunities to get credit. So I have no doubt that that is one of the things that contributed to that improvement.
Thank you. Concerning the improving completion rates and chronic absenteeism?
Yes.
That slide. You mentioned a 30 percent increase in students in poverty. Is that statewide? Is that local Lewiston?
This was just an anecdote I heard on NPR on my way over here. That was a statewide.
Statewide.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Penney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I know at the earlier school budget presentation, the school committee was rallied, because I was the loudest voice speaking out against last year's budget, and was prepared for me to come out strong against this one. There was quite a few shocked faces and open mouths, you know, when I said I'd support the third option, with the caveat that the money was spent wisely. It's been said many, many times during my tenure as a counselor, that the school made, school committee isn't respected by the council. I disagree with that statement, as we're both at the same table, just at opposite sides. We're arguing for the same things. There should be some discourses. We won't, we won't ever do better for our students without it. Last year, I spoke out against what I thought was a large increase with little to show for it, and it went to the voters who ultimately passed the budget. But said that it was too high. We, as the people of Lewiston, understand the value of our students and their education. This year, we are presented with a larger budget, so I figure I'm going to try something different. But first, please understand a few things. And as Madam Mayor can attest, when I argue and push, there's a passion behind that fire and a desire to see the best. Raise the bar, break it, set it even higher, and repeat. I've been in classrooms, albeit the ages are much lower than what we're talking about today. But I can still tell you that prior to working in a classroom, I could never comprehend just something as simple as the cycle of the moon, how that would affect a classroom, and the havoc that that can wreak on the dynamics of a classroom, and the stress that our educators face on a daily basis. I've been in your shoes, and I fight because I know how tough it is out there. So instead, I'd like to make some recommendations. Make classrooms places where students want to be. Be honest when things stink, are boring, or are a waste of time. Stop rationalizing, making excuses, or using confirmation bias. Stop encouraging students to go to overpriced colleges that fail to improve students' lives and that perpetuate a system that stifles innovation and equity. Fund schools like a Fortune 500 company, but with precision and zest. Treat the best teachers like rock stars. Give them reality shows, endorsement deals, and huge contracts. If we don't celebrate learning the way we do swagger and controversy and entertainment, let's stop being surprised when students love Beyonce more than they do Aristotle. Make school budgets entirely transparent. And as I was reminded by my daughter while writing this, a solution to snow day learning or or snow days. Rebrand teaching and learning completely, the same way Apple has done with computers, Starbucks has done with coffee, and Nike has done with jogging. Design complex mentorship and apprenticeship programs for all students older than 13. Use curriculum-based, use curriculum-based around thinking habits and the ability to know what's worth understanding rather than content. And use curriculum-based on the ability for self-directed learning. Stop teaching. This is a pull, push and pull action, and instead promote learning. Treat education as self-knowledge. Who am I and how do I relate to the world around me? Make libraries more like app stores with technologies that excite students, that they want to use. Lastly, I don't know the answer, but I'd be more than willing to roll up my sleeves and help figure it out, but get the state out of our schools. Because we spend so much time chasing this initiative or that mandate, we lose sight of what's right for our students. And before I'm told, nothing's impossible, it's just not easy. We have an opportunity to truly make a change, but unfortunately, those who are in positions to do, to make the change were raised in a world that no longer exists, myself included. Nintendo and Sega was all there was for video games. Pagers were a thing, and you would go to a cell phone to return that call. And augmented reality was known as virtual reality, and back then it caused seizures. We should look at designing schools and curriculums that reach out and engage our students and help them push boundaries, make them excited. A much-needed shout-out to Bobby Avery for her hard work and willingness to seek me out in the creation of the budget. And I apologize that I wasn't able to help out more with the vast improvements over last year. But thank you very much, and congratulations on your promotion. As we move forward with our schools and a change of direction, we all must respect the factor they play in our city as it adds, as it is one of the many critical factors of why people move to the area. As reflected in the school department budget raising 11.9% in their portion of the tax rate, I won't support a budget that prioritizes anything other than students first. Because this is for the kids, not bloated balance sheets and buildings pushed through as a legacy project that are already beyond capacity before ground is broken. I will support an eye for the future and a willingness to make us iconic. Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work.
If I, if I could, I appreciate those comments. It actually, some of them get you excited at what education could be in our community.
Exactly.
And, and I think that's something that could spread easily. Recognizing that the kids that we deal with, it's really difficult to strive to that next step because of some of the challenges that we deal with every day. And then finally, although, I, I guess I can speak for a majority of the school committee, none of, for the most part, we do not believe it's us against them when it comes to the council. We all are striving for the exact same thing, and we, it's okay to have difference of opinions. And when we have this discussion back and forth, we as committee members will grow, but I hope the council also, you know, grows in their open-mindedness and opinion. But as chair of the school committee, I can assure you, it's not about us against them, it's trying to find a, a place that we can all at least come to some type of compromise. So, thank you, Counselor Pettigale.
And if I may, Counselor Pettigale, I, your remarks were very well put together. And I would say that I would agree with well over 90% of it. And I think that what you put together is a very good template on, on much of what either we are or should be working on. I'll just cite a couple of things. We have a career and technical program that is full. And I've spent a lot of time on this last year, showing our support for the expansion of Edward Little, which will allow us to double the size of our continuing, of our career and technical education. And each one of those students in them, so has a mentor, they've got internship possibilities in the community, and I think that just matches so well with just the types of things you've talking about. And also that you don't need to necessarily go to this four-year school versus a technical program to, I mean, we've got, we have high school students graduating that are going into plumbing and other things that will be making more money than some that are going into a liberal arts four-year program for sure. One of the things that we're working on in the, the expedition learning at the middle school is we've paired with LRTC and their students, and it's, we need to do more of that. Another thing that we've done this year is that we have one of the foremost coding initiatives in Maine, all grant-funded. You know, time will tell if in two years that we can fund it in the regular budget or not, where over half of our students are getting a coding experience that they wouldn't have had a year ago. And we've expanded that program to calling it Computer Science for All. And, you know, I think that's the future. And when you talk about apps and things like that, that, you know, I, I love that idea that don't, don't just use an app, program it. And that's what our students need to do. So I, I think you've hit the nail on it pretty well.
So I have, first of all, you say Sega, I say Atari. One just quick question, and this might be more for you, Heather. The school resource officer, we had talked about that in our last budget meeting, is that the same position? So part of it's funded by the city and part of it's funded by the school department, is that?
That's correct. 75% is funded by the school department, 25 is funded, or the summers are funded by the city.
So it needs to get approved in both budgets?
Correct.
Other questions? Counselor Mark?
Some comments. Thirty-plus years ago, I heard the call, we need more money to address education. Thirty-plus years of increased budgets, and not sure that we're in a better place today. The community over the last 10 years has seen more poverty. The, the labor statistics show that we have a smaller average income, household, family, per capita. So I, I'm not sure that more money is the answer. It was mentioned earlier that the budget has increased for the school department by 11.9%. That's over the course of five years, that's one more year than your graph. And does not include more than the flat funding that we heard a few weeks ago. Speaking of what we heard two weeks ago, it was brought to my attention that there were security issues at the complex that you said that will warehouse 3,000 students on any given day. So I came out and I supported reluctantly an administrator, which I understood as an assistant principal, which I have to wonder, $110,000 for an assistant principal?
That includes benefits, but yes.
I'd like to see the breakdown on that. And that's about all that I supported in those additional costs. So I was a little surprised to see the report that came out last week that added $315,000 and about 15 cents, I believe, on the mil rate. We have looked at a mil rate increase for four out of the last five years, and an increase that's well beyond the rate of inflation, or the rate of increases in a person's social security check over that period of time. So the burden becomes more and more on those people in Lewiston who actually pay the taxes in Lewiston. It forces them to make a decision whether to keep their home from going into foreclosure, or tax lien, I should say, and their medication and their food, or even choosing to leave the community and maybe live with the child or something in order to get under the tax burden, out from under the tax burden. So, other than the $110,000, I, I can't support anything more than the flat funding that we were presented a couple of weeks ago.
If I could just respond a little bit, you know, we can look at Lewiston, the city as a whole, and our, our school department, and recognize that we as a community have invested a lot of money. But the demographics out there are changing. We're not reducing poverty, we're not reducing or increasing, you know, the ability for students to have safe, non-poisoning housing. So, you know, although we've invested money, we need to find a way to do it holistically in the community through better economic development. And in the end, hopefully increase revenue to the city so that the burden on property tax pay is lessened. But that hasn't happened. Right now, we're dealing with increase in populations of students coming from tough places, and we're expecting them to go through the school system and graduate and move on to whatever profession they want, either technical or college. So I think it's a much broader picture than just the school not performing at a level that it should. And until we as a community address it much more broadly, I think we're always going to be faced with this challenge.
Counselor Mark?
Thank you. So obviously, I've had a lot of time to think about this and say a lot on this, but I wanted to, again, acknowledge the school committee who went over this budget with such a fine-tooth comb. I mean, I don't know how many times Chief Administrative Officer Bobby Avery had to come back to us with more schedules that we asked for, and more spreadsheets, and just Excel all the time. So there, there was some, I think every committee member was critical of this budget, in the way that they looked at each addition, thought very carefully about if this was in the best interest for our students. And, and that's how we arrived at the additional $315,000 above the minimum required local share, or rather, above the flat funding, sorry. I think a huge part of this was meeting our contractual obligations, and then also investing in programs that are going to improve the status of Lewiston, especially the Longley program. We heard from those students who have been attending that at kind of a different site, and the workshop on that was given by the students, some of whom would not have made it and, through high school otherwise. And so if you have a chance to go look at the video, I would highly recommend it. This is a worthwhile program for investing in. And that's what we're doing with any money that's going into the school system in this budget. I believe it's going to be invested in our students, it's going to really help with completion rates and getting students who are ready and willing and able to learn. So I'm so proud of this budget, and also the way that it was presented, the way it was collaborated on, and all the work that went into it. So thank you all.
Other questions on the budget? Do you want to move into the LCIP?
So in regard to the LCIP, you obviously got the, the book from the city back in January that a city administrator put together. And the school department has, on pages 89 to 103, has what its mission was at the time. I have included a memo, and Counselor LaJoie, that's the one that you were referring to, which I'd be happy to, to talk about further, and there were some copies for the audience as well. What has happened in the past is I've often gotten a call, you know, from the mayor or from the city administrator, we need to figure out how we can reduce this LCIP. And so what we wanted to do this year was to present a possible change more publicly and have, just have a conversation and get some feedback. So the things that remain on that memo, well, actually, let me, I did go through and add this one, one additional slide. So the projects one through five on this are the five school projects that have a potential cost in FY20. And maybe I could just go down through this list, I'll mirror what's in my memo, the, in terms of the significance of each of the items on this list. So item one is the middle school electrical update. This had been in LCIP last year, we had hoped to have this completed last year, but as I'm sure the city has found in some things, we went out to bid and the cost came in so much higher. So we're not, we were not able to upgrade that electrical service from the, between the street and the panel. And we've been told, and I'm no expert on electricity, but that, that is an old system, and it's just ready to fail at any time. And so this would allow us to upgrade that and eliminate that risk of knocking the middle school out of commission. So we do not feel that that's something that can or should be postponed any further. Secondly, the Montell electrical update. We had the same situation in a way where we went out to bid a year ago, and the bids were double what we had expected. We were able to split that project in half, so in Montell's case, we have upgraded the service from the street to the panel. What we haven't upgraded is the building inside the building. These classrooms were built, you know, back in the 50s or whenever it was, with two or three outlets per classroom. We, you know, we're not supposed to be using extension cords, they're a safety hazard. And now we're dealing with one-to-one laptops for our upper elementary grades and many of our other technology needs. We just need to update that service within the school itself to put Montell even closely in a par with now all our other elementary schools. This would just bring them to where Geiger, Farwell, McMahon, and now Connors, or closer to that. Again, we feel that that is critical and something that should not be postponed. Item three is district-wide security camera upgrades. This was based on a recommendation from our security consultants in TRC that went through all our buildings. And in addition, we've identified a number of blind spots in our buildings that we really need camera coverage to, to, in order to ascertain what is happening in many cases. However, we recognize that, that there is the issue that the council faces in wanting to not increase the debt load, and in fact, trying to reduce the debt load to Lewiston residents. So in our proposal of reduction was we looked at the district-wide security cameras and the building access controls, item four. So that $1,014,000 in total, saying, what if we split that over three years? And if we did that, we still feel the building access controls, these are 10-year-plus-old access controls that need to be updated, but we would significantly cut down the camera upgrades for this coming year and just focus on the high school. If we did that, it would reduce the LCIP request by approximately $700,000. Item five is, relates to the proposal for the new Lewiston High School classroom wing. And I want to just emphasize a couple of things on that. One, as I say in my memo, the, the building committee of that project would very much like the opportunity to come and share more detail of that project with the council. And I've been in correspondence with the city administrator about trying to find another date further on down the road where that could happen, because I think you would find that very informative and certainly interesting. The, the $800,000 is really tied to the FY21 number as well, the now $12,400,000 or thereabouts. That is 1.1 million less than what it had been in the January numbers, because, because we did have an accurate cost estimator, a cost estimate done on that project. But that $800,000 is part of that project, and all it represents is the money that if approved by voters, if a council approved it going to voters, if it approved by voters, is what would need to be spent in FY20 in order for that project to break ground next spring. Until voters approve, the construction plans would not have been worked on at all. That would go to the architect. And then if it went out to bid, ideally for a, say roughly an April 1 breaking of ground, there'd be some costs incurred for site work during the FY20 year. But the bulk of the project would be in FY20. So we're hoping- So, we're hoping that the council will agree to let voters decide whether that's additional costs that Lewiston should incur. And I don't really, I prefer not to get into the justification of that, but have that happen in a workshop specifically geared to that project. So, hopefully, that has been helpful and be pleased to answer any questions or have us, the council engage in further conversation about the LCIP.
Do you want to ask a question? Counselor Joy.
You can talk on number nine with regards to McMahon and parking.
Yes.
As you know, that's an important factor in my district, and I approached you a number of times on that.
Yeah. So, that was something that back last November, we were going to put in the FY '20, but what we did instead, we, because we have needs at Geiger, we have needs at another school as well, is to combine those three, but put it in FY '21, because we do need additional parking at all those facilities. And you're right, the McMahon has got a lot of congestion, and this would help alleviate that.
Right. I guess my biggest concern, as I related to you before, is the amount of traffic backup on North Temple during incoming school days and when they exit to school. I know they're putting storm drains in there and redoing the street and therefore, in conversation with, is we had thought that we could do something in combination with that to widen the street enough to give that extra lane. It's an extremely important factor, and the neighbors in that area are not going to give that up as far as a goal to attain. And I'm sure that if I would canvass, the parents picking up the students, they would have the same concerns with regards as to safety, especially the children while running around, actually crossing the street and not looking. So, those are my concerns, and those are something that I was hoping would be addressed in 2019, 2020. So, that's where I'm at.
So, and I hear you, Counselor, and I don't know whether Bobby Avery has any other comment that she'd like to make on that. I do know that we need to work closely with Department of Public Works on a joint plan that would work there.
That's correct.
Don't let me put you on the spot.
You are. Really, so.
Be involved.
Can I sit?
No.
No.
I'll pay for this later.
He absolutely will. So, I hear you. I understand what you're saying, and I completely agree with Superintendent Webster and yourself. I happen to be incredibly in tune with safety, and so, this is a safety issue. I, too, wish that this could be in the next budget cycle, and it's just not. It'll, it'll come the next, the next one.
Okay. I guess putting it off, we kept putting it off, this came about in 2011, if I remember correctly, in the background check with regards as to complaints coming into the school and the traffic safety situation. So, you know, we're talking about seven, eight years now, whether the story.
Well, one change that did happen was when we last expanded the school, which I believe was 2014, we moved all the buses out back, and that did help. But one of the things that, in today's world, an increasing number of parents are driving their children to school. And we're, we're seeing that right there.
You did bring up another situation just now, talking about the buses going into the back. When they come down North Temple and there's a double line, as there is, the buses cannot get by or have to wait for the traffic to subside. Therefore, they take Ann Street to Old Green Road, from Old Green Road onto North Temple again. Wow. Try to get into the parking lot, and sometimes they're sticking out of the road, which causes another problem, as well as the neighbors on Ann Street complaining of the buses going in there.
I'm curious.
So, what's the compounds another?
And I apologize, because I should know the answer to this. Is in the LCIP, the North Temple road improvements?
Yeah, that is correct. Am I correct?
It's actually in this year's paving plan for the summer.
Would it make any sense, Mr. Dowdy, to, for us to sit down with you and just review that and see if, maybe we could somehow partner and enhance that?
Sure can. We're doing the same with the fire department.
Okay.
That was with other things, the fire department going there. So, I'd gladly sit with both of you, if you'd like, and try to work something out. So, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Yeah.
Did you have something?
Well, I'll wait till you folks are done, but I just wanted to kind of summarize how this goes from here on out.
Counselor Patengill.
Just to piggyback on what Counsel, Counselor Joy was talking about with the parking, I know at Geiger, it's a zoo, and that's a fairly new school. I would just like to say, in considering ways to go about addressing the parent drop-off, pickup issue, I wouldn't like to see an increase in impervious surfaces, because that goes to increasing urban heat islands around the school, raising the temperature of the school. It's not healthy for our students, you know, because then you get water runoff and drainage issues and all that kind of stuff. So, I would just like some careful consideration paid to, how about we go doing that without permanently altering or paving over surfaces with that?
That's a good point, and I do know that we have seen some improvements at Geiger with, you may recall that last year, you approved, or maybe it was through the planning board, to use the bus entrance or use the emergency entrance for buses only, and that has given a better separation between buses and parents.
That was a fantastic change.
Oh, that's good to hear. Thank you. But your points well taken, and I'll look forward to us sitting down with Public Works and seeing if we can't put our thoughts together and do better. Thank you for raising that point.
Counselor Ray, and then Counselor Mark.
Thank you. Do you have on hand the 18, 19 amounts for the two electrical upgrades from the LCIP?
If you give me a couple of minutes.
Heather's also doing it, it looks like. I'll wait. Different laptop. My, my hat. I don't know if it's, is it going to be something? I'm sorry for the pop quiz.
The FY '19 Lewiston Middle School was at $380,000. And, what was the other?
Montello.
Montello must have been, I don't have 18s with me, so that must have been in 18. I only have 19s with me.
Okay.
So, but I can look that up.
Thank you so much.
Our Chief Administrative Officer, do you have that with you?
I do have it.
Okay. Let me just quickly, it was, my recollection, it was 350,000 or so, but let me just quickly see if I can find something. So, I don't have the final, or this wouldn't necessarily be what was finally approved by the council, but it must have, it must have been the prior year, because it's not on my schedule for.
So, the work was bonded in FY '18, is that the guess?
Or at least approved by the council. Let me just, I'm going back to 17, 18. Let's see if.
You can certainly get that information for everybody. We'll be coming back to look at the LCIP after, it's in May, when we actually look at adopting it.
Thank you.
So, Counselor Mark, do you want to go ahead with your comment or question?
Several questions. And like the third one, it's really confusing me now, because it centered around the electrical updates. But on the parking improvements, coming back to that, $195,000. I assume that that's just pavement on-site?
I think I may be adding a few more spaces as well, but I would, maybe Bobby wouldn't mind coming and joining me more permanently at the podium?
Maybe you should just stay up here.
So, it is around pavement. It is to add some additional parking, I believe, and I don't recall if it was Geiger, but there's additional parking of like 10 spaces.
Okay. And I'm just recognizing three different schools, so that's split three different ways, $60,000 apiece.
Yeah.
So, that's not a whole lot of work being done.
So, it depends on what we run into, right? When we do the groundwork and such, we're hoping that, obviously, that it would cover it, but it depends on when they, when they start digging.
And segueing to Counselor Joy's concerns on North Temple, and my understanding, and I think it was reaffirmed a few minutes ago, we're into North Temple this year, correct? And I don't want to be paving North Temple now and then doing some sort of reconstruction to widen it at a later date. It should either be done now or postpone the project. But we really don't want to postpone, because we have a new fire station going in there that needs some, some work done on the road as well. So, that's going to be tricky. Question I had on six and seven, Longley and Dingley Building Security, security being what it is today, I don't know why that's being put off a year. And tying that back to the electrical upgrades at LMS and Montello, find it interesting that two different properties would be failing at the same time. I think I heard you say earlier that LMS had some real serious issues, and I don't know why that wasn't addressed when we did the $13 million facade to the building. And I'm not sure that what was being discussed with Montello. And something that my confusion earlier was, am I hearing that something did get bonded and authorized in a previous year with regards to these electricals?
Yes.
And it didn't get done? That's why it's back?
We spent up to the authorized amounts, but the bids came in so much higher, we could not do the full projects.
Okay. So, they were authorized and they weren't actually executed, because the bids came in too high.
Or they weren't executed in full. But we, no, we did do work. We did do work, up to the authorized amounts.
Up to the authorized amounts.
Yeah.
So, now you need more. Which brings me to item number five, and with the 12.6 million being slated for 2020, 2021, I can see that exploding, just like we did with the fire station, what I'm hearing with electrical upgrades. And one thing I do not support is authorizing a bond ahead of a public vote. So, I do not support the $800,000 that's listed as this year's LCIP.
So, if I may, Counselor Mark, the intent, and maybe it should have been presented differently, is not to have you authorize a bond before the vote, to have it be part of the vote. But if approved by voters, then $800,000 would be spent in the remainder of FY '20 and the other amount, the larger amount in FY '21. But the intent is that nothing gets spent unless approved by voters.
Well, I understand if we authorize a bond in May, that bond doesn't need to be bonded until such time that the money is needed to be appropriated when a project goes forward, just like you're saying, where that bid came in too high. And you did use the bond for work up to that point, but if you had not, that would be what you're explaining here. If it doesn't get approved in November, then it wouldn't be spent. But I am not prepared to authorize it and send a message to the community on how they should vote in November.
So, no, I agree with.
Counselor, it will not be on the bond issue in May, because you cannot, you cannot approve that, because you have to go to referendum first. It's just here, I think, to indicate what would be spent in the first year. You can, if we split a bond over five years and it was beyond the limit that required a voter approval.
But are you going to ask us to authorize it in May or June?
No.
No.
We will, all you will be asked to do is place it on ballot.
So, in order to spend it in fiscal year, in order to go to bond and spend it in fiscal year '20, we would have to take another vote at a later time, should the ballot question pass.
No, the ballot question is self-enacting. If the voters approve it.
The ballot question itself.
If the voters approve, in this case, it would be 13.4 million. They approve that amount, it pretty much takes care of itself. You have no choice. You would still have to authorize the bonds, but pretty much, that's what the voters have told you to do.
So, if, and if I may, and it may be that the LCIP format wasn't the clearest way to present this, but the, the ask on the part of the school, school committee is to authorize it to go to voters and let the voters decide.
So, just to summarize, that $800,000 will not be in the bond order that you see in May.
Okay. That's a clarification. And we, we would be asked to do that maybe next, it could be in December, it could be next spring, if the ballot question passes.
No, well, if the ballot question passes, it'll be for the full amount of the project, the 13.4 million. So, that really is just a projection that would be used by our city finance director to know that that's the estimate of the funds.
Yeah. And the council will still be requested to authorize that bond at some point.
You, you would.
That could even be after the fiscal year, because I would assume that someone can find the money in the budget somewhere to do the architectural.
Again, to clarify, authorizing the bonds authorizes expenditures. Issuing bonds, Heather does over time. We may issue those bonds over three years, so that we're not borrowing in advance of need, because we don't want to have an impact on our interest, paying interest, until that money's actually needed. Heather says she agrees, so I must be right.
Yes, I'll have to digest all of that and come back again on another day. And that was the scope of my questions and comments.
No, I'll, I'll, sorry. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, and Mrs. Mayor, excuse me. Just to clarify how things proceed from this point, as you know, we're scheduled to act on the school budget on May 7th to go to referendum on May 14th. The council's choice is to basically approve a bottom-line budget. So, you approve a total amount that's to be expended. If you do not support or go along with budget recommended by the school committee, the school committee then has to get back together and determine how they are going to deal with that difference. And that's a decision the school committee has to make. So, if you wait till the 7th to make, to give a clear indication of what you want to see, that puts the school committee in a very tight timeframe, because they have to go back and readjust their budget and readjust the various budget articles, so they would be, they would be required to meet, too. So, I would suggest at some point between now
I would suggest at some point between now and the end of this month, that the council come up with at least some indication for the school committee of what it's willing to support. The initial proposal that we discussed, actually before the school committee adopted a budget, was for a zero tax increase budget. This proposal is for sixteen cents. So I think that's obviously the range in which the council needs to focus. But I know that the, that bill and the school committee would appreciate some advanced notice and not have to come together on May eighth or May ninth and try to make some quick adjustments in the budget pending the election coming up the following week.
So can I recommend that we spend some time reviewing what was presented to us tonight, and on Thursday, maybe come back and have a preliminary conversation about that at the budget workshop?
That might be a possibility, or certainly, certainly there's two meetings next week.
If folks aren't ready on Thursday, I think we can decide then to put it off.
But I would like to put the school folks on notice that I can't guarantee when this is going to come up and be discussed here. If we do know, we'll let you know, but otherwise, I'd suggest you send an emissary at least.
She's right here.
I will not be present at next meeting, unfortunately.
Because I know there was some issues last year, because there was some discussion that went on that the school committee was not aware of, to try to get some feeling of what the council would or would not support.
If I may?
Sure.
Did I hear you say, that you're not here on Thursday?
Traveling for work next week.
Then I would request that that meeting not take place this Thursday.
She's here this Thursday. She's not here next week.
Oh, oh, I'm staying correct. So you are here this Thursday.
So if we could try to have the conversation this Thursday, that would be great.
Is that a six o'clock workshop time?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Heather and I were thinking the twenty-third might be a good date to shoot for that discussion.
Which is next Tuesday?
Yes, that way it would be kind of an all-inclusive finish line budget.
Okay.
Hopefully.
So since Councilor Ray can't be here on the twenty-third, is there someone else from the school committee that?
How about the twenty-fifth?
She's gone all week.
Oh, sorry. I missed that part.
You're okay.
Could you be here, Mr. Care?
I'll make it happen. I don't have my calendar. I'll make it happen.
For which day are you timed on?
So the twenty-third?
At six.
At six. Yep, that's next Tuesday.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Six.
Six, yeah.
But, but Councilor Ray is not available that day, is that correct?
Right, so Chair Care said he would be here.
Okay, I didn't know whether this Thursday it could happen.
So it sounds like it would be better for us to do it next Tuesday.
But that way Alicia will be here.
Yeah, I mean, the difficulty is that there's a whole bunch of stuff on the city side that we still have to go through.
Okay.
So it's possible we could do, we could do it on Thursday. I would like to get through the city stuff before we got to that, so that when you get to the school budget, it can be in the context of the whole package of where we're, where we are. I can't guarantee that you'll be ready to do that on Thursday, but we could certainly shoot for it.
So I would say if we're, we're gonna, we're deciding now that it will be on Tuesday, the twenty-third.
Yep.
Chairman Care will be here, Chairperson Care will be here. And we will not talk about it on Thursday.
It's up to you folks, if you would like to do it when Councilor Ray is here, we could try to do it on Thursday.
We're gonna do it on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
The twenty-third at six.
That's some clear direction. That's just what we need.
He recommended.
Yes. So put that on your calendar. Anything else? And you're gonna look up that number for you from the LCIP from seventeen eighteen. Okay, great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll give these folks a second to gather up their stuff, and then we'll start our regular meeting. Sure.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to Lewiston, the second largest city in the state, but the city with the biggest heart. Uh, we're gonna start tonight, um, with the Spirit of America Award recognition to the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council. Uh, so I'm just gonna give a brief introduction to the Spirit of America Award for the folks who are watching at home. Uh, each year, the Spirit of America Foundation, based in Augusta, asks main municipalities to select individuals, projects, or organizations for recognition of commendable community service. For 2019, the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council is our award recipient. The Youth Council was established by the Lewiston City Council in 2001, and the first group met in 2002. The council gives youth a voice, enables them to learn about municipal government, and to undertake projects and initiatives for the betterment of the community. Since July 2018, the current group has done the following. Filmed social media videos entitled Shine on Lewiston, Let's Get Down to Business, featuring several new and expanding Lewiston businesses. Launched an online city positive positivity feedback form for folks to share positive things about Lewiston, where submissions are shared through social media. Hosted a Shine on Lewiston Police Insider Panel Q and A with members of the Lewiston Police Department, sharing what a typical day is like, as well as from-the-heart perspectives about what they do. Hosted a Shine on Lewiston Let's Go Eat Food Sampling Event at the Franco Center to promote Lewiston as a food and dining destination. Twelve eateries participated and donated their food. People were lined up at the door forty minutes before the event even started. This month, they decided to do a Shine a Light on Bullying event with the assistance of community members on the evening of April 4th, and they posted encouraging, positive messages on fourteen hundred lockers at Lewiston High School and got some amazing press coverage. Uh, next is an Anti-Bullying Poster Contest with Lewiston's elementary schools, with grade-level winners from each school to be recognized at a ceremony hosted by L Y A C. And they are continuing to collect testimonials about bullying experiences for a video they want to film, and those can be submitted online at www.lewistinmain.gov/bullyproof. Uh, and I also just wanna give a shout-out to Dottie Paramwadhir, who's the city's, um, Community Relations Coordinator and also the advisor, um, for the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council, and she really makes the biggest effort I've ever seen, um, to help this group be successful and to make sure that their voices are heard, so, thank you so much. Uh, and also to the City Council Liaison, Zach Pettengill, who, um, as we just heard in our budget presentation, is very passionate about students in our district. So, if, um, those who are here can come forward, I know we have Emma Williams, Emma Wolverton, Hope Rubito, Damon DeWitt, and Carolyn Adams. Um, and I just wanna mention the names of the other folks who aren't here, so Hunter Steele, Carolyn Adams, Christine Chassy, Jordy Duchime?
Carolyn, it's you.
Oh, hi Carolyn, sorry. Oh, Caro- Chris, did I s- oh, sorry. Better double-check my list. Katie Morin, Madison LaFlem, Lilith Price-Worf, Zachary Moran, and Hunter Landry. Um, so if you guys could come forward, um, we have the City of Lewiston pins for you, and I have a certificate. Um, and how about a big round of applause for these guys? And then, um, let's do our place everyone.
Do you want one of your camera?
I'm sorry.
You want somebody to take one of your camera?
Going back.
Somebody can do this. Set it up for me, and then I'll, I'll.
And now we will have an update from the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council.
As an offshoot to our Shine on Lewiston series, we decided to focus on bullying. As you may recall, a member Christine Chassy asked the group to do so, as there are many upsetting bullying occurrences across the nation. We brainstormed and decided we wanted to put positive, encouraging post-it notes on every locker at Lewiston High School. We named the initiative Lock In Your Kindness. We wanted to help facilitate a local school environment where negative, where negativity and bullying were pushed aside by kindness. Mayor Cludier and Councilor Wright, along with member, community members, joined L Y C on April 4th as an L H S library. For over two hours, we wrote notes and posted them on fourteen hundred lockers. The response was great. The principal, teachers, and students were really enthusiastic about the notes, and the students who were interviewed by the Sun Journal the next morning expressed how meaningful it was to L H S students. Christine reported seeing that clumps of students were gathered around lockers, reading the messages and talking with each other. Next is our Bully Proof Lewiston Poster Contest with Lewiston's elementary schools. Superintendent Webster has given us permission to reach out to the schools, which was done earlier today. Grade-level winners from each school will be recognized at a ceremony showcasing their work. As far as the anti-bullying video we want to film, we haven't received many bullying testimonials, and so encourage people to send their stories to LewistonMaine.gov/bullyproof. The City of Lewiston is now seeking L Y C applicants for the 2019-2020 Youth Council. An application can be submitted online at LewistonMaine.gov/LYCapplication19, or printed at that link and mailed to City Hall. To apply, you have to be in ninth through twelfth grade, or will be in the fall at either Lewiston High School or St. Dom's, or live in Lewiston at the time of the application. We are pleased to report that in the first week of applications, uh, six new applicants have submitted an application, and we hope to receive many more. The deadline is May 17th.
Thank you. Well, we'll now move into acceptance of the minutes of the March 19th and April 2nd, 2019 meetings. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. All those in favor?
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And now we move into public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. The maximum time limit is fifteen minutes for all comments. If you could just state your name and address first, that would be great.
Charles Arthur Soule, 135 Bartlett Street, age sixty-six. I want you people to know that the average age of a Mainer is forty-three years old. Often, uh, when I try to give a speech, I usually spend days trying to figure out where I'm gonna start in. Some of them was, once was, um, who am I to speak? I'm not overly educated, overly successful. I am a veteran of a, uh, uh, military police action. And then, um, you know, I have given much thought about this for the last ten mayors. Ten mayors ago, I ran for Mayor Lewiston. Uh, I ran against, uh, Mr. Pluid, uh, for Pluid Parkway, uh, fine individual, and, uh, that was in nineteen eighty-six. Tonight, I am again declaring myself as a candidate to be mayor of Lewiston. There was an individual says, "I have a dream." I was gonna use that as an opening to the speech, but Martha Luther King used that. "I have a dream." And to you, you people out there, no matter how young or old you are, if you give up on your dream, you shouldn't. Keep trying, keep knocking on that door. It may, you know, you may not be a rock star overnight. Sometimes it takes a while, because you have a lot of maturing to do. I was listening to National Public Broadcast. I was surprised Bill and I are listening to the same radio station. Bill Webster, that is superintendent school. And, um, they said that, um, the age for maturity and wisdom starts from fifty on up, because you have that hallway of life to look down. And believe me, at age sixty-six, I've looked down a lot of hallways. Um, I'm also surprised that how society has changed. Society has changed that we now, I graduated from Attle Hill High School in nineteen seventy-three as a class president, student center president. I went to Boy State. I had a scholarship to Norwich University for scholarship. But back then, it was military etiquette. Uh, my father fought in World War II in Korea. It was a rite of passage to do that military. Today, that passage is gone. So is civil tree in our schools when they gotta post notes on lockers to remind people to be civil. Never happened in, at Attle Hill High School, uh, you know. It just seems that, uh, society is slipping away. Once again, I am declaring my candidacy to be mayor of the City of Lewiston. Been thirty years.
So I just wanna remind you, we're not.
I know, and you have a three-minute left.
Yep, but we don't.
Thank you very much. Why don't you gavel me like you gavel that lady? You wouldn't gavel that lady.
I actually haven't gavelled anybody.
Thank you, Ms. Cludier.
And we're not endorsing political candidates during public comment period. Does anyone else have a public comment, not related to an agenda item?
Hi, uh, my name is Kieran Madures Collins. I live at seventeen Jefferson Street, Apartment Four. And public comment has been recently used to discuss some pretty big issues. I wanna quickly address a very small one. Out in the hallway there, we have portraits of mayors. Um, and, uh, under each picture of mayor, there's a little plaque that has the mayor's name and the tenure of that mayor's service. Um, and many of the plaques have incorrect dates on the mayor's service. And this seems like a fairly minor issue, um, only interesting to history geeks. But, um, I think that, uh, if we're, if we're gonna bother to have little plaques recognizing mayors going back to eighteen sixty-nine, I think it is, um, you know, we might as well get it right. So, um, I don't know whose authority it is to, to look into that, if there's a city historian, or archivist, or something like that, but, um, you know, it seems like, uh, uh, it is, doesn't just seem like, it is a very small thing. But it does seem like it's worth fixing at some point, so, thanks so much.
So, either Mr. Barrett or Mr. Dotte, can I ask that you connect with Mr. Collins about the dates? Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, boom. Uh, public comment period is closed, and we'll open it up to the agenda.
Uh, all roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the counselor of Ward One. Item number one, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Little Joe's Bar and Grill, 740 Sabata Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to Little Joe's Bar and Grill, 740 Sabata Street.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor LaJoy, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number two.
Item number two, public hearing and final passage to contractually rezon the property at ten thirty-five and thirty-seven Avon Street from the Resource Conservation, Urban Enterprise, and Neighborhood Conservation B districts to the Sontreville District. Requested action to approve final passage of the amendment to the Zoning and Land Use Code and MAP to contractually rezon the property at ten thirty-five and thirty-seven Avon Street from the Resource Conservation, Urban Enterprise, and Neighborhood Conservation B districts to the Sontreville District, subject to a contractual agreement.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Markott, seconded by Councilor Ray. Do we have a presentation?
Only if.
Either an overview from the city administrator, or did the developer wanna?
We weren't planning on making a presentation since we had done that at the last meeting, but if the folks who are requesting the rezoning would like to just briefly summarize the proposal?
Uh, I don't think we need to, unless you want to share them.
You want to speak in the chairs, or from the nap, whatever's best for you?
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Brian Leahy. I'm the Director of Acquisitions for Saxon Partners. With me tonight is Tom Greco, who is the, uh, multifamily director for the company. We're here this evening, uh, the second reading, for a proposal on ten Avon and thirty-five, thirty-seven Avon Street, uh, for the rezoning from, uh, the previous zone to the new proposed zone that I believe you have in writing. The current site is a former lumberyard. Uh, it's been in disrepair for many years, uh, not generating really much revenue for the city. Our proposal is to build three structures. It is structure number one, two, and three. The first, uh, these two structures are basically identical, with about a hundred and five units each. The units consist of studios in one bedrooms. We, uh, and this bottom one is thirty-five units. The proposal is to have, uh, to gear these units for medical staff. However, we open it up to anybody who would, uh, is willing to pay market rent. Uh, this hospital, uh, closest to us, as well as St. Mary's, I employ, I believe it's in excess of four thousand, uh, staff. And, uh, we think there is a need, and believe there's a need, for this type of housing. We will include many different amenities, which I may have Tom discuss briefly, about the amenities that would be included.
Yeah, so, um, with the, uh, buildings, we'd have, um, uh, community space, uh, that would include a gym, yoga rooms, um, breakout areas, things of that nature. So the idea is to create a, uh, a high-quality living experience for the residents, which is, you know, again, close proximity to the hospital, so they can either walk, ride their bike, or whatever, uh, you know, however they get there. Uh, but it all, it would also have outdoor amenity space, uh, to connect with the river, um, allow folks to connect with the outdoors as well, so, that's the idea.
We also do provide adequate parking for the units. That does comply with the code. And, uh, on this side here, we're looking at providing the city with an easement for a new water line that would come in to, uh, provide a second means of water service to the city. And along the front, we would be, uh, willing to work with the city to open up that walkway, provided they have the remaining walkway completed as well. With that, I'd like to just open up and say, if any questions you may have, I'd be happy to answer, and, uh, I think that's it.
Thanks. Questions from the council? Councilor Lyson?
Actually, just a comment. Um, uh, obviously, this is the second reading. This is also just the rezoning of this property.
Correct.
I mean, it, and a lot of issues were brought up and noted, and, uh, I look forward to the project moving forward through the other review processes, if, if indeed the council approves it. When we'll get, you know, architectural renderings, uh, street improvements, you know, there's a lot of discussion what, uh, what can happen there, and some of the concerns that were raised also, uh, that can be addressed, so, uh, again, I just want the public to know that this is just a stage of rezoning. Um, and, uh, there's still processes to go through, uh, before the planning board in particular, so, uh, good luck with that.
Okay, there would be a full site plan approval process with the planning board, uh, that would take place. It would also include a traffic study, which is something we talked about the last meeting as well. So, uh, there were some concerns regarding that, so we are, gonna have a full traffic study done as well.
Counselor Markott?
Do you have a brief timeline on when the traffic study will be done, when you go before the planning board, and how soon before you likely?
The traffic study would be, would have to be ready for the submission with the planning board.
Well, do you have a timeline?
Timeline, uh, well, it's subject to tonight. We haven't, we haven't engaged anybody at this point.
Other questions from the council? To the public? Ed?
Just one other minor piece of information, that as a part of this project, we are looking at some street and sidewalk improvements, um, to enhance the ability to people to get from the project to the hospital up to Main Street. And we may be returning to the council and suggesting that be financed by way of a, uh, TIF zone, so that the additional taxes that this project produces would actually cover any of those, uh, infrastructure costs that are necessary to support it and improve the, uh, access in and out of the neighborhood.
Back to the count. Call the roll?
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item two B.
Item two B, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for the Trek Downtown Event to be held at Dufrane Plaza. And I will note, this was one of the handouts that we gave you at the beginning of the meeting, so I apologize for so much paper right before the meeting. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event for the Trek Downtown Event, and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter Ten, Article One, Section Ten-Dash-Three, to the Downtown Lewiston Association for an outdoor music concert to be held at Dufrane Plaza on June fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor LaJoy, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll?
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item two C.
Two C, order authorizing the city administrator to waive application fees and commit the city's in-kind resources to support the Downtown Lewiston Association's Trek Downtown Street Takeover Event. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to waive applicable fees and commit the city's in-kind resources to support the Downtown Lewiston Association's Trek Downtown Street Takeover Event.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any discussion on the council? Counselor Pettengill?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, um, speak, uh, Mike Dostie reached out to me earlier today, uh, wanted to let me know that, uh, since this was, um, unexpected, and they'd already had a big meeting planned, uh, that was done some months ago, that they're not here tonight. Uh, he hopes that, uh, counselor, fellow counselors, aren't offended by their lack of presence tonight, and mean no disrespect to it. Um, and he just wanted me to make everybody aware of that.
Thank you. Did I go to the public already?
We haven't, I don't think.
Any more discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll?
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number three.
Item number three, resolve repealing and replacing Master Policy Number Three Use of Athletic Fields. Requested action to approve the resolve repealing and replacing Master Policy Number Three Use of Athletic Fields.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor LaJoy, seconded by Councilor Ray. Uh, can we just get an overview of this agenda item?
Sure, with the new, um, the new, uh, facilities at Franklin Pasture, um, looking at the old policy and some of the names, but also just some of the structure and the ability for the public to be able to follow the policy, what's required, was a little bit, um, disarticulate, disarticulated, so we kinda redrafted the policy. Um, the only really large change in the policy in and of itself is the review committee. And the review committee is really mostly designed for when, um, field use becomes sort of like an event, like a lot of what we've been talking about today. And it really structures it, so it's Dennis chairs it, um, the assistant city administrator, myself, um, the rec department chair, the school department can get together and help, help a, um, large event go well, but also to protect the facilities, um, and put deposits down and collect if there's an issue. And that's really the last section in the.
Thanks. Uh, any discussion on the council? Counselor Markott?
I'm trying to find it, but, um, the use review committee on page five lists five people. I believe that, uh, in the next section, uh, it did not list five. On page six of the next section, it lists only three, uh, or maybe four, because number two refers to two citizens. So it doesn't seem to be consistent.
Look, I'm not seeing it, I'm sorry. I see on five, listing the five individuals, on my page six.
Um, and then the next section, use of athletic fields.
That's the old policy?
Yeah.
Oh, that, okay, I thought it was a.
It was confusing, yeah.
A second supplement to the same thing, okay.
Any other discussion on the?
Yeah, and the other question I had was, um, you mentioned in the opening memo, uh, seventeen thousand dollars, uh, anticipated, generated annually, two hundred and fifty thousand over the life. Of course, I could probably do the math, but, uh, what is the life?
It's, uh, twelve to fifteen years, and we'll be discussing that in the very, in your next item, because the next item talks about the fees, and trying to sequester those fees with the ability to at least have a portion of the rehabilitation, so, that's actually your next, uh, your next item on your agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pettengill?
Uh, on, uh, on the first page, under definitions, um, what category would, um, youth sports fall under, such as, um, the Lewiston Little League, um, or other such organizations?
There's actually a separate section for you, for things like the youth little, little, youth little league. I'm surprised I'm tongue-tied tonight. Um, if you go to page two, section D, so participants of seventeen years of age or under, belonging to Lewiston non, not-for-profit, would have no fee unless they ask for special services.
Okay.
I'm hoping I'm asking, answering your question.
I think so. It, the read, reading it, it seemed vague, so I wasn't quite sure. Um, and then, one other caveat, I think in the new, uh, new policy on page four, uh, when it talks about, um, softball and department-sponsored programs, uh, it's referring to adult softball leagues, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if maybe, uh, that should just be included in the header on that.
So adult softball tournament?
Yeah. That was it, thank you.
Other discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll?
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number four.
Item number four, resolve amending Master Policy Number Eighty-One, Miscellaneous Fees and Fines, Franklin Pasture Use Fees. Requested action to approve the resolve amending Master Policy Number Eighty-One, Miscellaneous Fees and Fines, Franklin Pasture Use Fees.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor LaJoy, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Uh, Director Doughty, do you wanna give us an overview of this item?
Part of this is, um, before, the fees were in the, in the, um, actual, um, use policy. It's been the city's policy for a while to move those into this section, so they're easy to, easy to, um, adjust in the future. And we're all looking at one location, and there's, they're not distributed throughout the tax, so, that's one thing. Um, I think the most important part, um, gets back to, uh, Counselor Markott's comment. We, um, surveyed a number of communities, um, throughout Central Maine on their rates. We and the school system got together and had a meeting and discussed whether we should kind of shoot in the middle for those, or shoot on the upper end, given that it's a new complex, and given all the other amenities around the complex, and also given that, um, probably replacement or full rehabilitation in twelve to fifteen years is gonna be four or five hundred thousand dollars, depending on the. years is going to be four or five hundred thousand dollars depending on inflation and all those things. We kind of shot for the upper end of the, of the use fees in Central Maine. And that's what you see here. And it's structured a little bit the way Portland's is structured. Again, similar facility, similar location, similar age. One, one minor, fairly, one significant point. There was originally a resolve that was to go with this, that was setting aside the fees received into a sinking fund that did not make it into the agenda. At least it didn't make it into my copy. It's in mine. It's in yours? Yep. Do you have it in yours? Which I printed off the website tomorrow. It's on the website?
No resolve, do you hear that?
Yes. So if you, if you would allow me to read this into the record, you could adopt it tonight if that would be acceptable to you?
Why don't you read it and then we'll decide?
Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lewis-, I'm skipping the whereas's, that city master policy eighty-one miscellaneous fees and fines is hereby amended as attached, and to adjust the fees charged for the use of the city's athletic fields. Be it further resolved that fees received for, for use of the athletic fields at Franklin pasture be placed into the Franklin pasture trustees fund to be used for the purpose of undertaking major maintenance and turf field replacements at the complex, subject to a recommendation from the trustees and approval of the city council. So what this would do is fees paid for use of the fields would be put into a separate fund that's to be used for major maintenance and replacement of the turf fields, subject to a recommendation from the trustees and approval by the city council.
I'll amend my second to include that. I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a friendly amendment from Councilor LaJoy, seconded by Councilor Lyson, to include the resolve in our motion. Any more discussion on, Councilor Markott?
On commercial use. What would constitute a commercial use?
A, a company who wanted to, a company who wanted to use the fields for an event or sponsored event of light company, something like that. Something that's not a, not, not-for-profit, either in Lewiston or outside of Lewiston, or is not a school. So if you take all the others, whatever else is probably a commercial use.
Okay. And I know we're talking about fields, but in the same master policy, there's a reference to four items under Public Works Department, first of which is blue recycling bin. Do you have any more of those?
I do not believe we do. That's probably some upcoming, some other adjustments we'll be coming back for in the future. I just grabbed that paragraph so you could see the context of where it was.
Okay. Because I'd be interested in one.
Just I suspect. There are, there are a number of things. Posted Road is another one I'll be back with.
Ten dollars is a reasonable price.
Councilor Patengill.
So again, and with the field use fees, youth groups aren't charged these fees?
Youth, groups under seventeen would not be charged.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And then sort of, I guess, in the vein of Councilor Markott's question, the note at the top of the page in regards to police reports, is that just included for reference as well, or?
Yes, that's just a section.
Okay. It seems very out of place, but.
Yep. No, it's just a section that it fit into in the policy.
Okay. And then nonprofit and school, is that like college teams practicing or using the fields for that?
A school from another municipality or a private school or something. It's not a Lewiston, schools that are not part of the Lewiston school, school system.
Okay. I just, I wonder, I wonder if, you know, with those last two line items for the nonprofit slash school and commercial, if maybe we can increase those fees or, you know, maybe, you know, absorb some of the cost for the nonprofits and drop, drop those and increase those other two fees, you know?
We, we had a lot of discussion about these fees and what we decided was that these would be a starting point to see what kind of demand we actually have. There was some feeling on the part of some that these fees may be too high, given the number of turf fields that various schools around the state are installing. But we, we would rather start high and reduce them if we find that that fee is a barrier, other than, rather than starting low and raising them.
Yeah.
So we want to take a look at utilization with this fee schedule and see how it's going. And if we're getting strong utilization, we can take a look at potentially increasing them.
Do we have any data as far as requests that we've already had prior to increasing these fees?
He's, he's gotten his normal, normal amount of requests already. So they're coming in like they would any other spring. In fact, they're coming in a little quicker because of the turf fields being ready, maybe being ready a little quicker than the-
Right.
-natural turf. So both, both Jason Fuller and Jason Hawken have indicated that they're getting their, a robust group even knowing that we're going to increase fees.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Can I, Councilor Patengill, can I just make sure, go back to page two, section D? That non, non-for-profit youth organizations, that applies to, for practices, for games they are charged. I may have misstated that previously.
Okay, so youth, youth organizations are charged for games?
Yes, under the same schedule as in the back. So if it's a local, non-for-profit.
Okay. Because that's, do we have teams that utilize the, the fields for games? Because I know-
I wish I had more experience, I could answer that more clearly for you, maybe. There have been a few times for like major tournaments for, for football, youth football.
Yeah.
I know they wanted to use the fields last year, and we didn't even have a policy in place, so we had to kind of scurry around to make allowances for them. But yes, I think they have at times, but I don't think it's been significant. I think it's been just for like a major, you know, championship game or tournament.
Yeah. I just, I have a hard time charging our youth to get out and be active when that's, that's already an issue. So I don't, I don't know if I agree with that. I agree with the rest of it. But charging our youth for that, I, I think is, is going the wrong way.
Then of course there are other fields other than the turf fields as well, so.
Right. But it's Maine, you know, it snowed just recently, so.
Yes. And probably will again.
Right.
Councilor Ray, thank you. So on the, sorry, backing up, I feel like I'm having a hard time understanding what city purview and what school department purview, given the kind of unique mix going on here. So forgive me if these are very basic questions, but the, the renovation of the Franklin pasture complex, was that through the city or through the school?
It was a city general obligation bond.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then administration of the complex?
The city recreation department operates and schedules the complex and provides priority to the school department for its activities.
Okay, and obviously-
Which is embedded in this policy.
Right. And coordinates very closely with the official.
Yes. Yeah, the, the two Jasons are relatively seamless at most times, especially if you want to change a policy.
Right.
And, and the two organizations split the cost. In other words, some of the costs, costs of, of the tennis courts, for example, maintaining and operating tennis courts is split between the city and the schools based on use. So the schools pay a percentage of that based on how much of the time they use. We pay a percentage based on how much time the general public uses it.
That's great context. Thank you. And then just on the fee page itself, I do wonder if it might be helpful, maybe I'm just particularly thick today, but I couldn't quite understand what the difference between each of these portions were. And I know they're in the definitions of the policy we just adopted, but maybe a reference to where to find that, if you are having a foggy day like me, might be helpful.
On, on here, yes, we could do that.
Thank you.
It's on the, actually on their app, the application which we'll need to redo too has actually got a lot of guidance in it and would reference, the new one will reference back to the two policies. So right now, the application is about two pages, and it has a whole bunch of if you're this, do that. And I, it's going to be updated to meet these once you, if you adopt them.
Great, thank you. So the, the fees that we've come up with are based upon you reaching out to Portland who also has a turf, is that correct?
To Portland, Bath, Scarborough, I can't remember if it was South Poland, but there were a variety of six or eight communities we reached out and polled them and looked at their structure.
Okay. And these fees are-
They were on the upper end of that, of that survey, yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
No.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to one.
Agenda item number five.
Item number five, confirmation of Mayor Clutier's nomination of Thomas Shannon to fill the upcoming vacancy in the Ward Seven position on the school committee. Requested action to approve the mayor's nomination and to appoint Thomas Shannon to fill the vacant Ward Seven position on the Lewiston School Committee. Set appointment to be effective as of April twenty-third, 2019.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Ed, can you just give a overview of how this opening?
Basically by, the city charter specifies how a vacancy on the school committee is to be filled. There is a, an individual on the school committee who will be resigning on the twenty-second, and so there'll be a position to fill. Under the charter, if that vacancy occurs within a year of the next municipal election, the mayor nominates a replacement. That must be confirmed by the city council. If it had been longer than a year, I believe there's a special election required.
Thank you. Any discussion on the council? To the public?
Heather Everly, 254 Blake Street. I protest Tom Shannon's nomination to the Ward Seven School Committee. He's used ableist language, in particular, he said, "I have suitcases to donate to your mental health. Please use packing as part of your therapy." Do you think it's appropriate to nominate or seat someone who uses ableist language? A mayor just resigned for racial, for racial language, and this is ableist language that goes against everything that folks in Lewiston are working towards. It's counterintuitive against combating the stigma of mental illness. And I know that I've worked with many of you on, that are sitting up there on these issues. And it's not trauma informed, it's not mental health informed, it's, it's really discouraging. I'm a mom with two children with IEPs, and I don't want to see someone who uses this language being on the school board. We need to nominate and seat someone who holds more sensitive views and support people who live with mental illness. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Back to the council. Councilor Markott.
I'd just like to say that Mr. Shannon has represented Ward Seven on the school board for many, many years and intermittently. I think there's a couple of times that he took time off or had another position as a state representative. I think he has represented Ward Seven extremely well, and takes seriously the budgets, and looks out for the taxpayers in my ward, and therefore I'll be supporting him tonight.
Can I move to table? Is that a motion?
That is a motion that would be in order, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Patengill, to table this item?
Yes. So the motion before you is to table this item. Is it to postpone to a specific date, Councilor Ray?
Sorry, just getting new information, and so trying to consider that. When's our next meeting?
May-
Twenty-second, so.
May seventh.
And the vacancy becomes effective on April twenty-second?
Twenty-third.
The vacancy?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. The current member will be participating in the school board meeting on April twenty-second, and her resignation is effective at the conclusion of that meeting. Yes, thank you.
Until the next meeting.
Okay. And so, so the motion, just so I'm clear, and Councilor Patengill, if you're seconding as well, to postpone this matter until the city council meeting of May seventh, is that correct?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. So that is a motion that could be discussed and is available for debate, but the motion before the council would be to postpone this matter until the May seventh city council meeting.
I thought tabling motions were-
Well, it, you're postponing it to a certain date.
Okay.
So the discussion is just remain to the motion regarding that date, if a councillor wanted to say they're not available at that meeting or whatever. But it is up for discussion and debate because, but it's only the merits of the motion.
Okay.
For the timeframe.
Councilor Markott.
With respect to the date, and there's much budget process to be deliberated on between now and then, and my Ward Seven should be represented fully on the school board as it is on the council, I don't believe that we should be tabling this tonight. We should be addressing it head-on. I don't think we'll get any new information that we haven't been presented with tonight. So I, I think it should be an up or down tonight.
Councilor Lyson.
I totally agree. I think we should move tonight.
Councilor Bean.
We're not having a meeting again until the seventh? Or is it because we're having budget meetings and, and we wouldn't be having like a regular meeting? So.
It's because.
There would just be workshops until then?
Normally, between now and the next meeting are just workshops. The city council, of course, can have a special meeting at any of those meetings if it wishes. That requires either to be called by the mayor or by five, four councillors.
We, could we call a, a special meeting with that one, the twenty-third?
You could.
So it wouldn't be as long? And, well, the twenty-third is, is when we need to make the decision, I guess.
Well, the twenty-third would shorten any break, break in service on the school committee.
Right.
It, it is not unusual if someone is no longer able to serve on a body that there can be a break in time between the time the person leaves the body and a replacement is either elected. If we were electing it, obviously there would be a delay or appointed.
So if we had a meeting and we voted yes to appoint him, there would not be a delay? Or would there be, I guess, maybe that delay between-
He would miss one meeting probably if we voted to.
Well, the school committee obviously meets twice a month, but I know at times they have special meetings for other reasons, including student disciplinary actions and items along those lines.
So it would work to have, to have a vote on the twenty-third? I'm, I'm thinking it wouldn't be any worse than having, waiting all that at the time.
Councilor, sorry, Councilor Ray.
So there is a meeting of the school committee on the twenty-second, and then there is a student disciplinary hearing on the twenty-fourth. So that is a potential missed meeting. And then there's an administrator dinner on the twenty-ninth. That's all I have until, oh, wait, and also a school committee meeting on May sixth. So if you all were to meet and decide on the twenty-third, there would be no laps. But the seventh, there would be three meetings missed.
I think we should do it on the twenty-third, if that would give you time to get more information. So are we going to amend the?
I'd, I'd support a friendly amendment to that.
Same. It's at April twenty-third, but a special meeting would have to be held?
So it sounds like-
I would suggest that the motion should be to call a special meeting on the twenty-third. I would suggest that the motion should be to call a special meeting on the 23rd. That way, if five of you, or four of you vote for it, we have the four council members calling the meeting.
So we should go through the motions of the current tabling motion, correct? If we don't want to do it on that date?
You could withdraw that. That motion could be withdrawn by the maker and sponsor.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn?
Okay, so the motion is withdrawn. The motion to postpone action to May 7th is withdrawn, so the motion before you is the matter that's still printed in your book, the original main motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table until, no, to call a special meeting on April 23rd to consider this matter.
I'm going to end the confusion and just, we'll vote on it as is.
Okay, so there's most...
So no, so there's no second to the tabling motion?
At this point, there's no second, right?
Okay.
So due to lack of a second, the main motion is still the pending matter before you at this time?
Okay. So any more discussion on the council? And we already went to the public? Counselor Markham.
Have we gone to the public yet?
Yes.
Just so that there's no confusion, and this motion is before us as printed in the agenda, I'll be supporting it. There's no need to wait till next Tuesday. I'm done with the politics of personal destruction, and we don't need to continue this black eye on Lewiston in any fashion.
Any other discussion?
Sure. I don't necessarily agree with the comments that we just made about that, but I'll be supporting Mr. Shannon, who's been, in my opinion, a good representative of the school committee and a good member of the community.
Thank you. Counselor Bean.
I was on the school committee with Mr. Shannon a few years ago, and he always represented his constituency as well, so I'll be supporting the nomination as well.
Any further discussion on the council? Call the roll.
Counselor, Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number six.
Item number six, order authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 40 Spring Street. Requested action to approve the order authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 40 Spring Street.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Pettingill. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number seven.
Item number seven reports and updates briefing on PFAS issue and its potential impact on the Lewiston Auburn Water Pollution Control Authority. Requested action, no action is actually required. This is just a presentation only to update the council on this issue.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. My name is Clayton Richardson. Most folks know me as Mac. I've been the superintendent of the Lewiston Auburn Water Pollution Control Authority, sometimes fondly referred to as LOPCA, for a little over 30 years now. So I have been here a while. I note that I don't take offense easily to the public all left, so that's okay. So you all may or may not be as up to speed on this issue as we are down at the plant. This really came to a head on March 22nd when David Burns, the acting director of the Bureau of Remediation and Waste Management at the DEP, Maine DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, issued a memorandum that essentially did two things. It required people or organizations that recycle biosolids, that is, the solids that result from wastewater treatment and have been treated to a standard by which they can be beneficially reused back to the soil for nurturing plant growth, to, number one, test for these materials, PFAS materials, I'll get to that in just a minute, and, secondly, halted all utilization of these materials on soils in the state of Maine until after testing and depending on how the department determined our compliance with a little-known section of Chapter 418 of the Solid Waste Rules of the State. So what we do with our biosolids, for years, we've had a land application program whereby we treat our solids to a point where they are an order of magnitude lower in potential pathogens than common manures, and then spread those materials on farmland to grow forage crops, corn and hay fed to animals. It's been an extremely successful program. Our farmers have, you know, been very pleased with the material. Also, for a number of years, we composted material on Penley Corner Road in Auburn and sold that material to the general public, landscapers. It was used to make Franklin pasture, as a matter of fact, to make the fields as nice as they are there. So this is a big blow to us because we have to, we're right in the beginning of the season where we're normally starting to spread this material for growing corn and so forth. It also has some fairly significant impacts. We're talking about per- and polyfluorinated compounds. These things were produced originally in the '30s and '40s and became quite popular because they have a number of properties that are very beneficial, we use them all the time. They tend to shed water and shed oils and greases. So they've been used very widely in things like Teflon cooking pans, all kinds of fabric protectors, soil retardants, Scotchgard, your carpets, they're stain-resistant carpets, upholstery, all those kinds of things. So they're widely distributed throughout our society today. This memorandum came about almost certainly in direct response to a publicity event that was held at a farm down in Arundel. Some of you may have heard of it, the Stone Farm there where, unfortunately, a farmer has had a very bad experience. It's interesting to note that we are pretty solidly convinced that the biosolids that were applied on that farm were not the source of the predominant PFAS materials. And I know I've been all over the map on this a little. It's just such a big thing that it's sometimes hard to get your arms around. But I want to make the point very clearly that we do not use these materials, we do not make them at the treatment plant, we do not, you know, produce them. We really only reflect what is the general use and chemical composition of society. So we're being asked to compare our biosolids to a standard that, when it was put in place, we were told at the time we're really not intended to regulate biosolids, but now through the way things happen, they are. And the standard is for 5.2 parts per billion. Let me say that again, parts per billion. That's five parts in 1 billion parts, or one grain or one weight in 5 billion weights. That's astounding if you think about it. And in a memo that you may have gotten a copy of, I think there were a couple of things that indicated, compared that to like time periods and so forth. But, so, and then the other standard is for 2.5 parts per billion of what is known as PFOS. So these are materials that have now been phased out of most products in the United States, but they were used in food wrappers until about 11 years ago. Your sandwich now at the deli was probably wrapped with paper that had actually been treated with these materials. So we're all carrying a body burden of this stuff. The health effects are, at this time, speculated. There has been correlation shown between these materials and some health effects, but there has not been causation shown. So the science is very much developing, and EPA came out with a 70 parts per trillion, again, parts per trillion, 70 parts per trillion in drinking water. And a lot of this action is spurred from that. And many of the states feel that that may not be protective enough, and I think there's a lot of concern and do concern on the part of officials. We want to protect, we want to protect our citizens. We want to do the best we can for their health, and certainly, we want to do that as well. But, you know, these very low concentrations, it's hard to know exactly whether there are health effects or not. And the EPA has said that their drinking water advisory of 70 parts per trillion should not be used to set any standards, such as the state of Maine and some other states, New Hampshire, Vermont, New York, Michigan, Wisconsin, Minnesota, California, a number of states are looking at setting standards. And it was really just because of this Arundel situation, in my opinion, that then we got this memorandum. So that's, I hope, the big picture. I hope I haven't gone too wild and bounced around too much for you, but what it means for us now is that we are stockpiling the biosolids that we produce after anaerobic digestion, after we have gotten power out of them and reduced their volume. And we have material that is stockpiled on one of our farmers that has a pad there that has been constructed for that purpose. And currently, we are stockpiling some materials at the compost facility over at Penley Corner Road. We got approval from the department to use that temporarily, although that facility is now shut for another reason. And we have tested our biosolids at this point. We came back with one lab at 13.8 parts per billion for the PFOS, which the standard for that is 5.2, so we're not quite three times the standard, which actually is not too bad. That's actually pretty good, believe it or not. We were non-detect for the other, the PFOA, and also non-detect for the PFBS, I believe. So what that means is that we are now in the process of going out and sampling some of the soils at these farms that we utilize so that we can do the calculations to show that if we apply so much biosolids at such and such a concentration, then the final concentration in the soil, taking no account for degradation of the compound, although they do degrade slowly, would be hopefully below that 518 rule. So we've spent, just to analyze the biosolids, a couple thousand dollars for that. To do all the soil sampling will probably be on the order of another $10,000 that we have to spend because of this memorandum from DEP. And at that point, we are fairly confident that we are going to be able to utilize these materials on farmland. We are just in the process this week of sampling those soils at the farms and hopefully get those results back in time. Until such time, we have about 10 days or so of stockpiling at our compost facility, and then we have another 10 or so days of filling up one of our digesters, because we have one of them down right now for maintenance and cleaning. And so that's actually somewhat fortuitous for us because it gives us another, or 10 days, 14 days maybe at the most. So we're looking at somewhere around the middle of May that we really have to have this figured out. We have been working with the Maine Water Environment Association to try to get a meeting with the governor and the DEP commissioner to discuss this. My biggest fear is that if the DEP does not understand that current technology, current understanding nationwide indicates that the best thing we can do with these materials is to put them back to soil. And that remains true even with this PFAS issue. And that if we do not do that, we do not have the infrastructure in the state of Maine to do other things with these materials. And that, then the question becomes, okay, then what? What do we do? One of the big stumbling, or roadblocks or choke points, if you will, to this infrastructure is the large compost facility run by Casella Organics up in Unity. When we ran our compost facility, it was the same thing. Now is the time. They need to be selling that product. If they can't sell that product, they can't keep bringing in materials. And most of the other treatment plants in the state of Maine are reliant upon that service by this company to move these materials, to recycle them responsibly. So hopefully, this is going to work out okay. But if it doesn't, then we really need to have some discussions about what makes sense. Because if we don't have any place to go with the material that comes out of the wastewater treatment process, what's the next step? The next logical step would be to say, well, how can we treat wastewater? And I don't think anybody's ready to think, well, gee, we should just keep letting sewage go directly out into the rivers. That doesn't make much sense. So it's really a big concern to us, and that's where we are right now. I'm sorry, like I say, but this has been a little hard to follow. There's a lot to it.
So the reason we brought this to you today is there's two kind of end members. As Mac said, if we go through the risk analysis and DEP approves it, we'll go back to business as usual after spending 10, a couple 10, $10,000 or a couple tens of thousands. The other end, the way other end for the state is that there has to be another facility for it. One might be landfilling. The trouble with landfilling is you have to blend it with something else at a ratio of like four or five to one. There's not the capacity in the state to landfill all treatment plants large across the state. So there's just a cost, there's a cost dynamic in here. And so we wanted to bring it to you because I don't believe we'll get to that other end, but if we do, we want to make sure you knew there was a possibility early on. That's all. And the further end is the stuff has to be shipped out of the state, which dramatically increases the cost.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's been some talk about a landfill in Alabama has said they would take it at about $500 a ton. Of course, we're now paying about $25 a ton in our current program. The other thing is, from a practical point of view, that's not going to last a week or so before their citizens say, no, we're not taking it anymore. You know, that's just the way this thing works politically, frankly. We need to take care of our own. And again, I want to underscore, I have very strong belief that what we're currently doing does not pose a risk, is good practice, but it's really more making sure that, I think, doing the testing at this point, even though there is no approved EPA method other than for drinking water. So we're being mandated to run tests that are not an approved method. I'm not going to quibble with that because I think the labs have developed their testing to the point where the testing's pretty good. So the testing is not so much an issue. But if, and I say if, in fact, these materials are as dangerous as some people are thinking they are, then we need to look at this and say, okay, if this is not the right practice, then we need to develop the infrastructure to do something else. And that's not a two-week turnaround situation. We're going to build either a great number of landfills, which is unlikely, they're very difficult to site and to construct, certainly don't happen quickly, or if we're going to build incinerators that operate in excess of 1,000 degrees Fahrenheit, that's going to take time, too. So one way or the other, we've got to figure out from a state level how we're going to deal with this and how we're going to deal with it responsibly.
Counselor Lyson.
Yes, thank you. Mac, thanks for your work on this. I happen to live, and my daughter lives adjacent to fields that have been spread with your manure, and always had some concerns. And when I read the article, it was like, oh, my God. But again, on the political side, DEP just, they issued this, this isn't a legislative action, this is what, just a memorandum of?
It's a memorandum that was issued by David Burns, the acting director of the Bureau of Remediation and Waste Management. I, from what I understand, it was really directed by the DEP commissioner. That's, I don't want to, you know, get out of line here or anything, but that's the understanding that was given.
But it has, it has the breadth of law. I mean, it... But, it has, it has the breadth of law, I mean, it's then a standard that has to be met.
Well, that's certainly how we're treating it. We're trying to work with the department to do what makes as much sense as we can.
Madam Mayor, have you heard any about this up in Augusta? I don't think so, but, again, I certainly support the testing. That's, I think, the minimum we can do, it's obviously an expense, and I do think the labs can handle analyzing something like sludge, even though that, I was a little bit concerned that you couldn't do that, but that now that you can, and you're suspecting that you meet their criteria, even you think that the criteria is a little bit outrageous, parts per billion, but you think, you think you only have one problem, compound?
Right, well, I do, the Chapter 418 rules are derived from soil cleanup standards at hazardous waste sites, and dictate the beneficial use of wastes. They are not, they only applied to sludge or biosolids in that they are referenced in Chapter 419, which is what actually governs the use of biosolids. So, if we had been underneath all the screening standards in 418, then I'd be like, we're good, we can apply this without limitation. Because we have the one compound that went over one of the screening standards in 418, we then have another procedure in 419, Section 5, that says, well, you need to look at how much material you're putting on compared to how much is already on the soil, and how much you're going to be putting on over whatever time period, so that when you're done, so to speak, you will not be over that screening standard in the farm soils. So, that's, you know, that's kind of where we are.
So, that gives you a little bit of latitude though, too.
Hopefully, yeah. I mean, we still have testing to do, and we still have the calculations to run.
And I assume everybody's facing this across the state, too.
Well, the thing is that most of the facilities, we've been much different in Lewiston Auburn than most of the other facilities. We have chosen to manage our biosolids internally. It served us very well, we have, I think, some of the lowest cost and some of the best programs in the state because of it. So, many of the other treatment plants are sort of one step back from the firing line, if you will, because it's Casella Organics that has the compost they've made from the biosolids from 20 or 30 other, you know, treatment plants in the state, and that's what most of.
But, we're all in the same, I mean, they may be one step removed, but if Casella shuts down, they're in the same boat that we are if we can't plant spread.
That's a good point, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you. So, I feel like I'm hearing two threads, and I just want to make sure I'm getting it right. There's kind of this urgency with what are we going to do when the stockpile and the digester and everything is filled up, and boom. So, for that, what I'm hearing is the timeline is, there was a press conference and a memo on 3/20, March 20th. These memos in our packet are from March 26th and March 28th. Here we sit on April 16th. I know City Administrator Barrett and I heard about this when we were at the Maine Municipal Association's Policy Committee on, actually, March 28th as well. So, is there any action being taken from the legislature or from the state agencies to tell you anything, I suppose?
Well, the, you know, I'm quite involved in the Maine Water Environment Association. We've been trying to get a meeting with the DEP commissioner. Again, I've only heard anecdotally, but that he's been on vacation 10 days or so after issuing this edict, and he has indicated to us that he can't meet until May 1st, at the earliest. It seems a little one-sided to me, frankly, that this has produced such a crisis for us, such a short-term action, and it seems like, you know, we're having a hard time getting our side of the story out.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the things that I remind people about is, you know, if you have carpet in your home that's more than, oh, 10, 15 years old, the likelihood, the dust in your home is up into the hundred of parts per billion, as opposed to the five that were expected to meet in our biosolids prior to applying it to farmland, and to me, I'm not, I don't really understand how it's such a crisis for us without looking at some of these other sources.
Okay, so, it's accurate to say like, there's this urgent part where we'll run out of stockpiling and options? I would suggest you take them at first meeting, even if it's the first one you can get, but it sounds like there's also a secondary background where the rules that exist in the new reading of them, maybe not in the enactment, but in the new reading could have deeper implications over time for Water Pollution Control Authority, is that correct?
I definitely do believe that, yeah.
Okay, so.
We need to, we need to be, and the governor set up a task force on this, which, you know, really makes a lot of sense, that's a more long-term look, it's a more, has a better time horizon for the issues we're facing.
Okay, so, two parallel tracks, kind of, and there could be a possible budgetary impact from that urgent one?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other discussion on the Counselor Ray?
Curious, how many tons do we produce a year?
A year, about 8,500.
Eighty-five hundred tons, okay.
And that's, that's cubic yards, so it's probably more like eight, little under 8,000 tons.
What was that, Heather, sorry?
I'm sorry. I suggested we would all have to go on a diet.
No more chocolate.
Well, you know, I do remain hopeful that, you know, I mean, obviously, this is something that we're going to have to come to a reasonable solution on. It's unfortunate that it's, I think the, you know, it's become a much more immediate problem than I think it really should have been made. I don't want to say a manufactured crisis, but maybe a step more.
How, what, excuse me.
Yes.
Thank you. What was the timeline from the edict that was put forward to you guys and today? I mean, when was that edict?
Well, the memo came out on March 22nd, and then the requirements there were, bear with me just a minute, sampling and it was required that we submit to the department a sampling and analytical plan by April 12th, and that we conduct the initial sampling no later than May 7th, after receiving the department's approval of our sampling and analytical plan. And I want to take just a quick minute here to say that the citizens of Lewiston Auburn are blessed with the staff I have down at the treatment plant. Our compliance coordinator, Isaiah Larry, put together a plan that we submitted to the department well in advance of their deadline, and got back feedback that it was an excellent plan and should be used as a model for the rest of the state. My employees down there are doing a tremendous job cleaning out the digester and getting that back up online, I mean, you just don't see the kind of work that the people that work down there at the plant do day in and day out, and we should all be thankful we have them there, so.
Other discussion? Great, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your attention. If you have any questions at any time, or have any questions about what we do or how we do things, by all means, give me a call, I'd be happy to give any of you a tour of the facilities and, you know, answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I want to bring one other thing to your attention. I think you may recall that Doug Green made a presentation to the council back several months ago, talking about solid waste issues downtown, one part of which was trying to work with stakeholders to address some of the issues we face. Coming out of that, Amy Smith, who I think some of you know, who works with.
Healthy Homeworks.
Healthy Homework, Healthy Homework, is working with a group of volunteer and social agencies in the downtown area to put together a neighborhood cleanup effort. We had a meeting with her today, and they are going to be doing something on May 3rd or 4th, over that weekend, focusing on 10 blocks downtown. One of the things that came out in that meeting is that they will be, Almighty Waste is providing some waste containers that will be set up as kind of a temporary transfer station to assist people in the downtown area who don't have the way to get out to our landfill with their material. As a part of that, and the discussion today became apparent, we may need to close part of a street for that event, and there may be a small overtime charge associated with Public Works. Normally, that would come through the regular council process, and you folks would approve it, but we're running up against deadlines, so I just want to make sure that it would be okay for us to proceed with that. It's about, at most, a $500 expense and some overtime for closing the street when they're going to be dropping off material at those dumpsters and moving the dumpsters out.
Do you need a vote at all?
I don't think so. I mean, technically, this is something we feel almost like we're sponsoring, helping to sponsor, except we really want them to take the lead on it, so we don't get involved in doing too much additional work. And they do have some grant money, they are working with about 10 other agencies to get volunteers, so it's a pretty significant effort that she's putting forth. We'd be glad to get you some more information on it.
And just wanted to add that Amy, who's also in the rental registration.
Yes.
Agenda item number eight.
Item number eight, any other city business counselors or others may have relating to Lewiston city government.
Great, do I have a motion?
If not, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate negotiations, of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city.
Second. I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Ray, all those in favor.